While we are conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment, please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. So, welcome, everybody. And the first item on our agenda is volunteer applications for the Agricultural Commission. So, we have two new applications. We've got an outstanding group of people who have applied this year. We have a total of six applications. There are seven positions open, five, for lack of a better term, permanent, and two alternate positions. So, you've seen both because they're up on board docs. I'll just take a moment to highlight each. I know that Stacy Apple was going to try to be here tonight, but she was coming from another farming event and might not have been able to make it. And I know Greg Mellinger is not able to come because he's on an international call. So, they both apologize if they were not going to be able to make it tonight. But Stacy Apple is the owner of Iron Ox Farm that has been in Topsfield for four years. Her background is in environmental studies. She's currently on the KPN Farmers Market Committee, and she is very committed as a farmer in Topsfield to raising awareness of farming and the benefits that it offers the town and its residents. Our second application is Greg Mellinger, who is the CEO and owner of High Quest Partners. He, his business is in agricultural supply chain, US and globally. He's a consultant. They put together major conferences about all issues concerning agriculture, specifically organic and regenerative agriculture and helping farmers to access capital. So, Greg is also a member of the planning board. So, you can take a look, you know, in more detail at both of those applications. And all six individuals then will be voting on at our meeting on the 28th of June. Any questions on those two applications?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to make some comments. I don't know Stacy Apple, but I know Iron Ox. They have been running a really pretty neat farming operation on Nutter property that butts Steve Nutter and Ben Nutter. And they've done a really nice job of that. And I've talked to, God, I can't remember. I've talked to the Nutter family about that, and they're excited about what they're doing up there, and that's cool. That's all I, I don't know them, but they've looked like they've been doing a good job up there. Greg Mellinger, we've known for a long time. I've known him for, God, 20 years, maybe. Graduated West Point. I'm glad to see that he's in some side of agriculture, and I didn't know that, as a matter of fact. So, that's cool. And with that, I'll shut up and let you guys talk.
Since we're talking about Iron Ox Farm, though, I think it's also important to recognize that they have recently been awarded a 99-year lease on the property that used to be patent property to do farming. Not the entire piece, but that one part that is on the Ipswich River side of Asbury Street. So, they're deeply into the farming in many ways, yes.
And they also will be attending the Tomato Festival to sell their wares, so.
Well. Another shameless plug on the Tomato Festival.
I have to. Did I mention we're getting three tiny ponies from Meredith Farm?
That's awesome. What fun.
Yeah. Those are the animals that they rescue that would have been put down, but they go to the farm and they take care of them. So, and Meredith Farm will also be at the festival.
It seems to me that, Lynn, the four individuals who spoke to us, I actually may not have been four, it might have been three, last session, plus these two, I mean, they seem extraordinarily well-suited for this role. I mean, they're so committed to agriculture. I don't know what negative could possibly be said about anyone we've heard from.
Yeah, it's great. We were really working hard to find talented individuals for that commission to jumpstart it because it hasn't met in a couple of years, and it's just such an opportunity for the town and the residents. So, we're very excited about these folks signing up and giving their time because the farmers are very busy.
Well, Greg is a great operator, and I know him as a very sober businessman. And, you know, I think having him involved in this will be excellent for a startup. And he basically, you know, he helps companies, as you stated, but he understands startups, and I just think he'd be terrific on that, on that board.
Great. Thanks, Cam.
Thanks, Kim.
So, our next item is the one-day liquor license from the Ipswich River Watershed Association for their sixth paddle-athon. It looks like we have, it doesn't look like we have Brian Fitzgerald joining us.
No, I'm sorry. I usually know how to change it, and for some reason, it's not letting me. But I'm Lauren Fitzgerald, so nice to meet everyone. And Lynn, when I was Lauren Abernathy, I babysat for you when you had your, like, your first and then your second, like, two or three. So, way, I was a junior in high school, so congratulations.
I'm not feeling too old, Lauren.
Oh, okay. Well, so I saw your name, I was like.
Lauren, she's had a bunch of them, so.
I heard there are five now, is that the, is that?
There are.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I just thought, I thought I'd do a little, you know. So, I just wanted, yeah, so I guess, I just wanted to appeal to you all to, first of all, I know we're coming very late to this in the game. We had secured the police back in May, but honestly, we weren't sure if we were going to have an event, if we were going to be able to have any form of event, and whether or not, to be honest, Ipswich Ale was even going to have their beer truck up and running and on the streets. So, it was really the cajoling on behalf of some of our partners in Ipswich to finally get them to say, yeah, we'll get that beer truck running, and then left me scrambling when I talked to Deb, and she said, you're way late to this game. So, that is my explanation in advance. I'm asking for leniency and thanking you in advance, if possible, to consider this late application and approve it. But I can answer any other questions you need.
You have a good track record. So, this is, even though you're coming late to the game, we know about your event and how well it's conducted, and it's a real positive. So, does the board have any questions for Lauren before we put a vote?
The only thing I would say is that how can Robbie Martin possibly not have his beer truck ready to go?
He's, you know what, for some, he got some control, but he has it ready now because they're actually doing an event at Turner Hill that day, too. They have two trucks. So, I think it was just the doldrums that everyone had, and now suddenly everyone's up. So, that's how, I guess, Boyd. Or should I say, Mr. Jackson, I'm sorry.
Sounds good. No, you don't have to apologize.
So, how did the publicity work out? Do you expect a good turnout at the last minute here?
I think we do because I will say that we had, we did our advanced participation. So, people have already raised the money. So, this is more of the thank you party. And I'd like to say that in this, we should expect about 100 people. We have 167 of these shirts that were actually ordered, but most people have already done their actual physical paddling. And I'm happy to say that we have, as of yesterday, raised $77,000, blowing out our goal of $65,000. So, yeah.
That's pretty good.
That's terrific.
It's really the goal of the watershed overall. Since I'm from Topsfield and I'm part of the Ipswich Watershed, we are 13 communities, and you will see increasing efforts throughout all our communities to sort of get this type of activity going because we are one watershed, and when it comes to the water, we're all drinking the same stuff. So, thank you all for your approval and yay for.
Well, you say you only have one watershed, but the fact of the matter is it is the most important for the town of Topsfield.
Exactly.
And other towns up and down that river.
We know it. And if you've all seen, we've been designated on one of the most endangered rivers in America by American Rivers this year. So, that's, you know, so we're all on it. And so, thank you all for your support, and we are just going to be out there. And I hear about the Tomato Festival. I'm also the outreach committee chair. I'm on the board there. I don't actually, I'm not employed, I'm just a board member, just a board member. So, we'd love to participate in that as that gets planned. Just let us know. We can do tabling events and do some stuff, whatever you need, so.
Oh, that's terrific, Lauren. Do we have a reach number? Does Debbie have a reach number or an email for you?
Sure, I can give it to you now live as well, but it is on the paperwork. But let me just give it to you while you have your pens handy.
Okay, hang on, because I'm.
Oh, you know what, I can, how about this?
My writing skills back. My cast just came off, so I can slowly write. Actually, Deb, do you mind taking it down because it still hurts?
Yeah, I have it. I'm also. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, can I have a motion, please?
Yes, I would like to make a motion this way, though. Because this is within the 30-day period, we should make one motion to waive the normal time. So, I would make the following motion. In consideration of the governor's recent changes in COVID-19 guidelines and their effect on event planning, I motion to waive the 30-day filing period for the Ipswich River Watershed Association request for a one-day liquor license.
Do you want to say for the paddle-athon event, what we're giving the license for?
For the, yes, I'll add that to the end of it. One-day liquor license for the paddle-athon event on June 19th.
Yes, at Lot E in the Topsfield Fairgrounds. And everyone on the select board is welcome to stop by. The activities start at 4 o'clock.
We just have to finish out the vote.
No bribes here. We have to, we're taking your vote without any.
She's a good marketing person. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing them, we'll go to roll call. Oh, did you have something, Boyd?
Yeah, I just wanted to say it's going to be at the fairgrounds, and you said Lot A.
Lot E, so it's the 97 entrance.
I have a hunch we won't have any trouble finding it anyway.
No, you won't. Look for the tent, it's already there.
All right.
We're only voting on the waive at this point.
I thought you were combining them into one motion.
I think we're doing two motions, one to waive the 30-day, and then after that, we're going to do the motion to approve the license.
Okay, it sounded like one to me. All right, so this is just the waiver. All right, roll call, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Hook? Mr. Gant?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
And Ms. Bermudez is aye. It passes unanimously. And Dick, do you want to restate the second motion?
I don't have it in front of me, but.
I will. I would move to approve the application for the Ipswich River Watershed Association for a one-day liquor license for the paddle-athon event to be held on Saturday, June 19, 2021, at the Topsfield Fairgrounds, serving hours from 4:00 PM to 7:00.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Jackson.
Looking forward to it, and I vote aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez is an aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Lauren. We look forward to the event, and we'll be excited to hear about the festival.
Thanks, Lauren.
Great, thank you so much. Have a great evening, everybody. Talk to you later. Bye.
Okay, if I could, I'd like to just switch the order of two things. One is the select board meeting schedule, and then the other is the evaluation process for our town administrator. Reason I'm switching them is I'd like to suggest some slight meeting schedule changes based upon our discussion of the evaluation process. So, just a little background on the evaluation. So, we have not, to date, or in my discussions with anybody, gone through a town administrator evaluation. We didn't do one for our last administrator. And so, I did a little digging. I reached out to Boxford, I talked with KP, and I'd like to propose an approach for Kevin's evaluation. So, background, you know, he was hired in December of 2019, so it's been a year and a half. So, this will be his first evaluation. We would be getting on to a fiscal year schedule, which is actually now in sync with his contract. His raises are on a fiscal year basis, so we're actually, this is good timing. So, you have four documents up on board docs. One is the job description of the town administrator. Then you have Kevin's contract. You have the management evaluation form that I'm proposing. We use with some tweaks. I'll talk about that in a minute to evaluate Kevin. And then the fourth are the board goals for fiscal year '21. Since we did not come up with any objectives for Kevin, I have asked Kevin to put together his accomplishments for the last year and a half and tie them into the board goals, the five goals that we have. There may be a couple of things that fall into another category, but probably just about everything that Kevin has been working on will sync up into one of our five board goals. He would get that to us, that document, by the end of June, and Debbie will update the evaluation form, again, I'll talk to you in a minute about that, and get that to each of us by the end of June. Then, I'm proposing that we take a look at his accomplishments using that evaluation form as a guideline and come in to do a verbal review with Kevin in person on July 15th. That's a slight change from our schedule. It's moving it back a week. So, right now, we were supposed to meet on July 22nd. We would each give our review of Kevin. Now, there are two parts to that management form. One is what he did, and that's the accomplishments. And the other portion are more the soft skills, which is how we did it, leadership, teamwork, planning, organization, et cetera. So, each one of the five of us would give a verbal review, and it would give Kevin a chance to talk to each one of us relative to our feedback with him. It would also give all of us an opportunity to hear from one another because on some areas that he has worked on, one or more of us may be more familiar with it, and so you'd be able to hear our perspective, which would be helpful. There are some things I know Marshall has worked on directly with Kevin for the website, and I really have no feedback relative to that. So, Marshall's input would be helpful for us to hear. So, once we do that verbal discussion and evaluation with Kevin, we would each go back and fill out the management report or evaluation completely, as if we were the only one doing the evaluation, and we would give it to Debbie. Debbie would cut and paste and include everything on the five of ours and would cluster it in the correct sections. So, everything having to do with the accomplishments, say, all of Boyd's comments and Marshall's and Cam, Dick's and mine, would all appear under that particular accomplishment. Similarly, any comments relative to the soft skills would be cut and pasted so that everybody's comments are included. That document, then, would be reviewed at the Monday meeting two weeks from then, and so that everybody would be able to hear the final evaluation. And then we would have any further discussion on that and then vote on it. Following that, we would all sign the form, the evaluation, as well as Kevin would sign the form. There's one other piece to it following that, and that is the pay raise. So, his contract says that he gets a 2% raise. Actually, the first time was after a six-month period. So, his first raise was six months after he was hired. That was on June 30th of 2020. His next raise is coming up in two weeks, on July 1st, 2021, and each of those is 2%. Now, just as an FYI, last year, Kevin volunteered to have his percent increase decreased because everybody else in Town Hall had a lower increase than the previous year. So, Kevin took a 1.5% increase. But the 2% is going to kick in on July 1st of 2021. The contract says that we have an option as a board to give Kevin more than that, if we so choose. So, my recommendation would be, following our verbal discussion and evaluation at the working session, we can make a decision whether or not to have an executive session to discuss whether we would be offering anything more than the 2%. At that point, we would be able to hear from everybody and make a determination. We may say, you know what, the 2% is good, we don't need an executive session. Or we could say, I think we need to discuss, you know, go into a strategy session to discuss any kind of a pay raise. So, we can make that determination July 15th at the end of the review, if we so choose. Or we could say, no, we don't need any executive session. So, that's kind of the process that I'm laying out. The only thing I would add at this point, if you look at the management evaluation form under those soft skills, like the leadership, for instance, there are four things that could be checked off because this is assuming there's only one person doing the review. So, it's either this particular skill is not applicable, the person doesn't need it, so an NA is checked off, or the person needs improvement, or they meet standards, or they exceed standards. For our purposes, we're going to have to average what it is that we're putting down there. So, I would propose that instead of having these four boxes that we can choose, we would choose from a range of one to five. So, you know, three being he meets standards, and then two and one is on the negative side, and four and five are on the positive side. If we choose to put a three, and this is how Boxford operates, you don't need to give any verbiage. You don't need to write anything down. We get it, he met the standards. But if you do something other than a three, you'd want to put down something specific to identify why you're going out of the meets, you know, meet standard. And it's especially important if, for some reason, someone identified that he needs improvement in some area because that's something we would want to consider at the end of the review. There is a section here on developmental goals. So, apart from whatever we say needs to be done from a select board perspective or a town perspective, there may be very specific developmental skills that we want Kevin to work on. And so, it would be very important, the comments that are in here, if they're less than meet standard. So, that's a lot that I just threw at you. If anyone has any questions, and then just feedback as to what you think of this approach.
Well, Lynn, I appreciate all the work and the time you put into this because this is significantly more than we've done in the past two years or three years, and in fact, more than we've done in the last 10, probably. Because we haven't been very good at doing these evaluations, in my opinion. And I'm partially blamed for that because I hate them. In this particular case, it's easy. And I will shut it off very quickly by telling you that I tell people all over town that hiring Kevin Hartunian is the best thing we've done for the town of Topsfield in the last 20 years. And that's where my evaluation is going to come down to. And so, I'll shut up at that point and let people take it from there.
Thanks, Boyd.
Lynn, I think the one-through-five system is smart. I think it's, I think it's better, and in this case, we need to do it. We implement a similar system at my company, and it's, it's a lot more, it's a lot more telling, except you have to comment all the time. I understand the, if you have a three, not necessary, and I applaud it and I agree with you. Would we have any, he has not had a review yet, correct?
Not yet.
So, so we're not going to have a weird, you know, we can't figure out how he's improved from the previous one. So, that's good. Is there any look back that would be a problem with moving to the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5? I mean, it really doesn't matter historically what's been done. So, everything you said makes sense to me.
Okay, thanks, Cam. One other thing I would throw out there, in talking with Al Vaz, the chair of the Boxford Select Board, I just wanted to find out what they did. They actually, for every comment and every score, they identify the select board person in the review, and they color-code it. It's very precise. So, in their case, like in leadership, if someone put down a two, it would say, let's say, Lynn Bermudez, two, with my comment. Dick Gant, three, no comments. And it was identified. Same thing with any comments about the accomplishments. The name would be there with the comment. And so, that's something else I want to throw out, whether people think that's too detailed, you don't need to identify the select board person, or no, I think it's really helpful to be able to overall see what each select board member thought throughout the review.
I think that's a good idea. I don't have a problem with that.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, it gives us more to digest and get into it, and so we'll know how everybody's judging up or down, and I think that's a cool idea.
I think it's appropriate for the, for the log to say who said what. And just for the record, though, since there's been some discussion about it, Ms. Kelly Hebert had an evaluation, I believe it was 2015. The whole board participated in it. Everybody put their things in, and very much the same thing. It was a matter of coming up with an average from one through five, and it was required to provide an entry for why you gave a certain rating to Mrs. Hebert.
Oh, okay. I did not know that. I didn't find that information.
Yeah, so that, that was done. And we had, it was an open meeting that we discussed with her. Yeah.
Okay, great.
About 2015, 2016, I can't remember.
Okay.
I was the chair.
One thing that I would mention in talking with KP, they said that for the verbal review, if we come in and we don't refer to our notes, if we're just saying, okay, I'm going from the summary that Kevin put together, and I'm looking at the skill sets here, and you just make comments, your notes are not a public document. They are not entered into the record, and they are not accessible by other people. If you say, I wrote this down, here are my notes for this meeting, and you refer to them, then they do become a public document. I would request that we keep them as private notes until we all had a chance to discuss because there may be some things that come to light that we say, you know, I didn't know that, or something we hear from Kevin or from another board member that may change what your final review is. So, I would keep these as private notes and because you're going to have a chance to write down the full evaluation and submit it with your name that will go into the record for the 28th review. Any thoughts or comments on that?
I think that's appropriate, and they should be.
Maybe a little harder for me. I may not be able to remember as well if I don't have it.
You can look down, Dick. You can totally look down. I mean, you can write the entire review and bring it in, but don't refer to the fact that you have a review that you wrote for the meeting in front of you.
And they have some notes in front of me.
Well, as long as you don't say, these are my notes that I wrote down. If you just look down and say, Kevin, one thing I wanted to share with you was, then your notes are not public. You have to refer to the document verbally. So, if we don't refer to our documents verbally, they are still private notes.
That is ugly stuff.
Well, I think it's less confusing than if they, we had some documents on the working session and then another set of documents for the final review. I think it's just cleaner because we all have a chance to verbatim say anything and have it go into the review for the final review.
I'll bet you we can all handle it.
Okay, so if that sounds good, Deb will go ahead and make tweaks to this document because there has to be a section for the five of us to sign instead of one. She needs to give us more space to write things under each of the soft skills, et cetera. So, she will send that out at the end of June, and Kevin will send out his accomplishments at the end of June. And then is the July 15th date okay to modify it from the 22nd to the 15th?
I think so, but I have to clarify, I have to confirm one thing, but I think so, yes.
Okay. All right, then, pending Cam's, no, confirmation. What, Boyd?
Lynn, I'm sorry. I just want to interrupt just for a second. One of the things, when we interviewed Kevin for this job a year and a half ago, he came in with a document that said, here are things that I'd like to accomplish in my first 100 days. And that impressed, that impressed several of us so mightily that it might be worthwhile, and I haven't read that for a while, but it might be worthwhile digging out some of that stuff and saying, well, okay, Kevin, let's see how we did. I'm not, I'm not afraid at all about how it's going to happen. But here was a young guy, 35 years old, that told us what he wanted to accomplish in his first 100 days. And that document is around, I'll bet you, and we can get it for you if any of you would like to see it.
Yeah, it would be interesting, you know, to look back at that. Of course, once he came in, he did have to align what he was working on with the board's goals. So, some of those things that he suggested may or may not have been in line with what we were thinking, so.
Of course, of course.
But that was very.
At that point in time, he was a babe in the woods.
Lynn, I've got a question for you. You said that Deb is going to modify this so that there's more room and change the wording. Are we not typing out our responses? Is this all going to be handwritten?
No, you can type it out, but the form, the Word doc that she's going to send to us will look just a little bit different to give us space and to change, you know, those, those four categories. It won't be NA meets improvement meets standard.
Yeah, yeah.
And we want through five, minor tweaks. So, but yes, you can definitely type it.
Okay.
It'll be easier for her to cut and paste and read it.
Much.
For sure. Okay. All right, then the only other piece, then, and I just left it to the end. All right, then the only other piece then, and I just left it to the end to keep it clean, there's a section at the very end of his evaluation that talks about next year's objectives. Now, we haven't gotten around to doing our objectives, so I would recommend that we just put TBD in August, or not even a date if we want to, in his evaluation because we're going to be meeting in August to do our objectives, and from there, his will flow. So instead of attempting to try to put some objectives in now before we've even decided what we want to focus on, let's just wait and do that part in August. Does that sound okay? Okay, and then with that, I would suggest one other tweak to the schedule then. I would like to add, if it works for everybody, one other meeting, especially since one of these now can be, or a lot of these can be virtual still, if we add August 12th as an in-person working session to take the first stab at the objectives. I think we're going to need two sessions. That's what we've seemed to need in the past, is the initial brainstorming session. We refine it, we go back, think about it, submit, you know, our thoughts, and then get together a second time. So if we add August 12th in person, we already have August 19th on the schedule, and that could be virtual because I think we can work from a screen share the second time around for the discussion. And then by 8:23, we'd be able to finalize the objectives. That would be.
When were you trying to add a meeting, an in-person meeting?
8:12.
Okay.
And that seems to fit with everybody's vacation schedules.
I was going to say, I, I know that I sent it to you, so I wanted, I sent it to you and then immediately forgot.
You told me you were leaving 8:13, so I tried to sneak one in on the 12th. Would that work for everyone? Does that sound like an approach that way we can wrap things up in August for our objectives?
Oh, I think I could, I think I can make, when you say in, in-person meeting, you mean in Town Hall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I'm good with that.
I just think it's easier around the whiteboard and to discuss, add things, take things off, than to try to do it with a dialogue with the Brady Bunch boxes that we have here.
And that will be a face-to-face meeting, executive session?
Nope, it's an open meeting. Anybody can attend. It'd just be like a working session in the conference room that we did, you know, previously in years past, where we could sit around the table and, and talk.
Now, if, if we're, and we certainly don't have to decide this tonight or anytime soon, but if we're still in this window between, you know, when we're allowed to do it virtually, but we're going to meet in person, we might consider doing it in as big a room as possible, just in case people want to come there. They might feel more comfortable rather than, I mean, I've done, prior to being on this board, I've done a meeting in that conference room. And I was kind of vaguely uncomfortable before we even knew there was such a thing as COVID-19 in that room.
As tight as we all are, Marshall, that makes you uncomfortable?
Well, I'm just saying, I have no problem hanging out with the whole audience. But if somebody from the outside world wants to come because it is an open meeting, they may not find it as welcoming to, to hang out and sit right next to Boyd, who.
That's true, we can do it in the public hall.
What are you suggesting?
I'm just asking that maybe, maybe we do it in the hall upstairs or, or something like that, just so we, if we're in a, go ahead.
Selectman's meeting room? I mean.
I, I mean, I'm just, that one's larger than the conference room, so that's a good step in the right direction. Yeah, I mean, that, that might be fine. I'm just saying, open to the idea. I mean, the likelihood is nobody will show up and we'll be fine. But I, I, so yes, at the very least, we should do it in the selectman's room rather than that.
When you say conference room, what are you talking about?
That, that one in the back corner where I think you guys did.
We always met for working sessions.
That small one in the back corner?
Yeah. I, I like the public hall. You, you're right, Dick, that the, the board meeting is bigger. But if we have a whiteboard, we're sitting kind of a half moon, the whiteboard would be in front of us, which would be in front of all the people. And so the, the setup might not be as conducive to having the whiteboard in the public hall with us kind of clustered, and then everybody around able to see the whiteboard and us.
I, I mean, I don't think there's a problem with doing it in the public hall unless there's something I'm not aware of.
For, for, for the getting size and with acoustics, and we've done them there before, I would suggest the library meeting room. It is excellent for that. You set up the tables in the middle, people can watch from it, around it, whatever else, and the acoustics within that room are reasonable. It's got acoustic towels on the top, it's got rug on the, carpeting on the floor. It works out very well.
It is true that the public hall is very echoey, and particularly given that we'll still need to, to provide access to the meeting electronically as well, that would probably not do great for the audio of anyone who wanted to join via Zoom. So I think that that is probably a good idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea, Dick, and as long as that's open on those dates, we can check with Laura, Kevin, to see if.
And the time that we're looking at, though, is seven o'clock, right?
Right.
And this is our face-to-face meeting?
This is our face-to-face for the objectives. And.
The only, the only problem I got with that is it becomes a pretty, moving into the library may, may make it a little more difficult for people to figure out what's going on, not having it in Town Hall, doing it in the library instead. I, I'd just like you to think about that a little bit. I don't care, I'll do it either way. And Marshall, I will, I'll take a shower before we.
Okay, that's good. That's all we've been asking for.
Okay, good.
All right, so maybe we can take this offline and, and, and look at the options a little bit more to see what will work best for the public and for, for recording and for us. So is the 12th okay with everybody to add?
Yes.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. All right.
I'll be there.
Okay, great. Then the only last thing on the meeting schedule to talk about is, is now that we're able to meet virtually through April 1st of 2022, what we would like to do relative to locations of these meetings. So we decided before as a group, we would like to zoom through the summer, that that would be the work well. It's kind of a transition period for people if they're still uncomfortable with COVID and with vacation schedules and such. So now we have September through April. Not that we need to decide tonight, but there are three options. One, we continue virtual, and at any point in time, it could change your meeting to be another location. We give enough notice, we can change it. So even if we say, we'd like it all to be something, we have that option. So all virtual. Two is all in person. And then three is a hybrid, which allows virtual for not only residents, but board members, according to the governor's order. So some of us could be in the room, and some of us could be on a Zoom.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Answering that question is, A, that we not answer it right now, that we take the summer, I mean, already by what we're planning to do, we're going to be experimenting with doing this a couple of different ways. And so if we take the summer and we're going to be doing a lot of them virtually, we're going to be doing some in person. We may just by virtue of vacations and whatever, end up with your hybrid thing. And we can gauge how the town at wide feels. Are there people who've been waiting for us to meet in person who want us to do that again? But if we kind of take the next three months to do all of the above, then we can get to the end of the summer or near the end of the summer and see what has worked, what hasn't. Because I know we, we have concerns about technical issues in a variety of different places. So let's see how the summer goes, get to the end and decide how to approach it from there through April.
Any other thoughts from people?
Sounds okay to me. I, I think hybrid, I think the hybrid issue is going to be really complicated. And as I said earlier, I like Zoom meetings. So I would be willing to pursue the Zoom meetings as long as we can, but I'd go either way.
Cam, I'm sorry, you said something to.
Well, yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm in agreement with Marshall. I think that's, I think it's a great idea, and it looks like we have another seven, eight. So now I guess seven more, with the exception of the 8:12 one that are going to be Zoom meetings. Yeah, I'd like to see the temperature of where everybody is in, in September.
Yep, Dick, any thoughts?
That sounds good. The, the concern I would have with the hybrid is the technical part of that. And the issue of technical has to do with sound. The people in the room in person need to have a way of controlling that sound. I'm sure that Zoom has come up with solutions for that by now, but that is something that would have to be worked out.
Okay. So we have the schedule that we approved last meeting. So the edits would be changing the 7:22 to 7:15, just waiting for Cam to confirm.
Just got an email, I'm good.
Excellent, okay. So changing 7:22 to 7:15 and adding 8:12 as a working session, both of them at seven o'clock, and both of them, 7:15 and 8:12 in person. And then we would put virtual for June, July, August, with the exception of those two meetings that we just talked about. And then TBD September through.
Sounds good.
Yeah, April, and the May will leave the way it is because it's at Masco High School.
The August 19th, what time is that?
They're all seven.
Even though it's a virtual, we're going to go with the seven. Great.
It sounds like that's what we decided last time. All right, does, did I summarize that correctly? Okay. So could I have a motion for that?
I motion to approve the calendar as described by Lynn.
Your second?
I'll take it.
Okay, we'll move to roll call. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez is aye, so it passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, appreciate it. So in correspondence, they were just, obviously, the governor's order that KP sent us, which was very helpful, elaborated on the impact, what it meant to us. We got that a couple hours ago, so that was helpful. There was another thank you note. And then there was one thing, I was just going to ask you, Kevin, it was the invitation to the Topsfield Hazard Mitigation and Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Public Listening Session. Just a question, is this, it sounds like this is town-wide. Anybody can come and listen to the presentation and give input. How is this being advertised? Do you know how this word is getting out to everyone because it's a week from now?
Yeah, so I know it's up on the website, I think I saw that on the news, double check that. I know we've, we've been updating Wendell on them. She hasn't, hasn't been sort of something that's been covered too much through the newspaper, but the Fire Department will put it out on their social media page as well. And I think there's, that's been typically, I think, how we've advertised these types of events. I'm not sure, we'll certainly have people attend. I'm not sure the numbers at this point, what we expect. But I'll talk with Chief, who's been really running point on this and doing a fantastic job, and verify exactly what her, her outreach plan is beyond the, the ones I mentioned, if any.
Okay, I don't know if the general Topsfield resident page, there might be a number of people who are interested if they don't know to tune into the, the Fire Department Facebook. Might reach a number of people.
So we could, what, we, we've purposely not posted on those pages directly. We, we know somebody like, in the past, we've had some, you know, resident who's acted, share something that we've posted on, say, the Fire Department, or the link to the website as a means to get the word out. So we could think about maybe who might be able to help us on that.
I can always post to those websites or those pages. I'm a known actor on those.
Personality. Okay, great.
I just wanted to, to give, offer two things before we went into executive session. One, on Saturday, there will be a Juneteenth event on the Common that's going to take place at 4:30 PM. We're going to be putting up the Juneteenth flag, and there'll be a whole program around that. So that'll be in the Common by the gazebo at 4:30 on Saturday. And a week from today, the Topsfield Drive-In has very kindly agreed to help with a fundraiser for the Topsfield Playground Committee. And so that evening, they allowed the Playground Committee to select a family-friendly film. It'll be Sing, the animated musical movie Sing. And then there's a second movie that night, and the Drive-In is giving us a percentage of every ticket sold to both shows going to, or not us, going to the Playground Committee. So that's a week from tonight, if folks want to check out the Drive-In. I believe these movies again are Sing and Fast and Furious. And I know that Boyd is a huge fan of the Fast and Furious.
Another zinger.
So those two things. Common at 4:30 from Tuesday, and a week from tonight at the Drive-In for the Playground Committee.
Thanks, Marshall. I thought that was so creative of the Playground Committee. That was a great idea.
Yeah, and I have to give credit to the folks at the Drive-In who were very generous in working with us, and I think cut us a better deal than, than they had to. Well, they, they didn't have to do anything, but cut us a very nice deal, so it's going to work out well. They are good community partners, the Drive-In folks.
Sounds pretty cool to me.
That's great. Could I have a motion to enter executive session, please?
Yes, of course. Let me do that. By roll call vote, the board will enter into closed executive session in accordance with MGLC 30A 21A, under exemption number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, the board will not return to open session. Items for discussion are all bargaining agreements asked me, the Police Reserve Association, and the Police Benevolent Association. So I would move that, we move into executive session.
Do we have a second? Okay, roll call, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez is aye. The motion is unanimously approved, and we are now in.